The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of February 12th, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Corr. Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
I'm here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Coman.
Here.
And Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Thank you. We have no members of the public present or media, so I am going to forego public statements. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Closed session, item 4A, Conference with Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation Regarding Five Matters. One, Blasparra by and through guardian ad litem, Joseph Etienne v. City of Bakersfield. Two, Anna Hernandez by and through her guardian ad litem, Rudy Hernandez, Eubani Lares, Roque Lares, Sylvia Lares v. City of Bakersfield. Item Three, Kyle Peterson v. Christina Moreno Gonzalez, the City of Bakersfield et al. Four, Ingrid Crawford Smith et al. v. City of Bakersfield. And Five, Jeffrey DeBern v. City of Bakersfield et al.
Thank you. We're adjourned to closed session. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. There were five items on tonight's closed session for A, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and in all matters, there is no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we stand adjourned at 5:10. And we'll start the 5:15 meeting in just a minute.
Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 10:00 a.m., and the following Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular city council meeting of February 12th, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Corr. Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Coman.
Here.
And Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome to all of you. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Al Goscon from the Christ Church of the Valley offering the invocation. Pastor, thank you so much for your church's investment in the Amor Ministries in Mexico, and then also for your collaboration with Flood, working together with the homeless. We appreciate that. And then, following the invocation, tonight, we have the Ridgeview High School Virtual Enterprise Business Plan Team Unleashed, who will lead us in the pledge. The VE program provides a hands-on experiential learning experience for the class. Students gain that business entrepreneurship experience, business management, public speaking, teamwork, and so much more. You'll be able to see that when they talk about their program. So grateful for all that you've done. This plan now is moving them on as the first-place winners in California, on to New York in April. And we are so glad to see another group from Bakersfield move on. We'll let the team members introduce themselves after our pledge. So would you all stand now for the invocation? Pastor?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmembers. As a newer member of Bakersfield, a little over two years, thank you all for how you lead, for the burdens that you take on, for how you lead this city, and the fact that we get to open a meeting like this in prayer. Doesn't happen too often in Southern California where I'm from, just throwing that out there. But let us pray. Lord, you who, by your power, made the mountains, and you who quiet the seas and the roaring waters, we thank you. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our country. Honestly, we thank you for this planet and this life that you have given us. We thank you for each and every person in here, each and every person that leads this city, each and every person that has a role in this city, whether it be a big or a small role. And, Lord, today, I pray that your justice, that your righteousness, that your ways would be mirrored by all those in this council meeting, that every single person in here, whatever faith, whatever place that they come from, can just be reminded that every single person in here is created in God's image, every single person deserving of love and respect and joy. Over the mayor and over all the council members and all the people in our government that work tirelessly for us, Lord, I pray that you're with them, that you give them wisdom. Oftentimes, Lord, they put their own needs aside for the needs of others. Oftentimes, they have real hurts and real pains, and they swallow them to help others. For them, Lord, I could think of no better healing than your presence. I can think of no better thing for them than your counsel. Be with them, Lord. Be with them as they guide the city, be with them as they make all of the decisions that lead the city into the next era, be with them as they fix that which needs fixing, be with them as they amplify that which is already working. Lord, we pray that you are over the city, watching over it, making it a beacon of light in our county, making it a beacon of light in our state, a beacon of light in our country. We love you, Lord. We thank you, and we lay this prayer up in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
It is now time for the flag salute. Please stand. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. You may be seated. Wolfpack, if you stay there. Pastor, thank you so much. It's my pleasure to be able to present this certificate of recognition to Ridgeview High School Virtual Enterprise Business Team in honor of Ridgeview High's Virtual Enterprise Business Team Company Unleashed, winning first place at the 2025 Virtual Enterprise California Conference and Trade Exhibition in recognition of your dedicated efforts to pursuing excellence. Congratulations on your achievement. We can hardly wait until you win Nationals. So it's my honor to be able to present this to you. Would you come up, introduce yourself, your coach, your advisor, and whatever else you'd like to say? Right, and who would like to receive it? Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Sophia Passenball, and in our program, I am the vice president of our marketing department.
Hi, good evening. I'm Abigail Ariano, and for our business, I am the vice president of human resources.
Hi, I'm Jocelyn Levas, and I'm the VP of Sales.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ravi Jat Sahoda. I'm the chief financial officer for Unleashed.
Hello, everyone. I am Yahira Mata, and I am the COO for our Unleashed Business Plan Team.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Audrina Nativedad, and I am the CEO of Unleashed this year. To tell you a little about our company, we focus on the lifestyle and health of dogs specifically right now, and with products like our tailored nutrition plan and Paw Pro Collar, we hope to give dogs a better chance at living a more positive lifestyle. To introduce our coach, Mr. Garcia, today, and our advisor, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure for me to work with these kids. This is my third year working at Ridgeview with a VE program, and it's just a blessing to see these kids be very good at what they do. This is quite an honor, and I know they're very humbled when it comes to the level of success. They put in the hard work, the effort to really be able to lead in the state being number one. We're very blessed and fortunate that of the teams at Ridgeview, they are one of five teams that are going back to New York. And it's because of all of them and their level of engagement that really has made a difference, and it really allows me the opportunity to use my business skills that I've acquired over my 30 years to apply it with all of them to be very successful. So I thank you very much for inviting them.
Good evening, guys. My name is Miguel Garcia. I'm the teacher, the virtual enterprise teacher of these students. But first and foremost, I want to thank you guys for acknowledging the hard work of these students. As an educator, it means the world to me to see my kids get this recognition. What they've accomplished, winning the state title, is a big deal, but no one's worked harder than these kids. They deserve it. It couldn't happen to a better group. I want to thank, I mean, the community for the support, because it takes a village. I want to thank our advisors, Mr. Taylor, and all the staff members who've made this happen. We appreciate you guys' time and acknowledging our students here at Ridgeview. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Let's give it up for the Wolfpack. Good? All right. You can stay all night, but I'm imagining you're supposed to go and study, so thank you so much. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons and as a courtesy to others. No signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents a city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in your removal from the meeting and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, and outbursts from the audience, and then also surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, proclamation to Kristi Torres, Chair of the Safe Surrender Coalition, and Erin Rogers, Member of the Safe Surrender Coalition, declaring February 2025 as Safely Surrender Baby Awareness Month in Bakersfield.
Well, we are pleased to have Erin Rogers, who's been a champion for this cause for quite a while. Safely Surrender law was first created in 2001. The law has helped to decrease the number of newborn infant deaths statewide due to abandonment or unsafe locations. And thank you so much to the coalition for your dedicated efforts to protect our little ones and to make sure that all are safely surrendered. It's my honor now to read this proclamation. The mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California, has officially proclaimed February 2025 as Safely Surrender Baby Awareness Month in our city. In recognition of the Safely Surrender Baby Coalition and its efforts to provide a safe alternative for newborn babies to be safely surrendered, in recognition of the partnership of government, nonprofit organizations, private businesses, and residents that are committed to providing places of sanctuary for these babies, in recognition of the need to heighten public awareness regarding the issue, and the need to provide a safe refuge for the innocent newborns involved, in recognition of the five infants safely surrendered in 2024, and in recognition of the 103 precious infants safely surrendered since the program's inception in Kern County in 2008. And it's my pleasure now to be able to present this to Erin Rogers. Thank you so much, Erin, and the mic is all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Go. Thank you, Councilmen. We are deeply honored by this proclamation and by giving attention to this very important law. I personally have two friends who received a safely surrendered baby into their family, and I know what a difference this makes. I also work daily with women in crisis pregnancies, and to give them this alternative, that they can carry their baby to term and safely surrender it to any fire station or hospital, often brings great relief to that woman facing an unplanned or crisis pregnancy. And I want to share just a quick story. I was at the Wasco City Council meeting a week ago, and as I received the proclamation on behalf of our coalition, I was walking back to my car, which was a wow. I mean, it took a few more steps. You wouldn't think in Wasco, you'd have to hike to get back to your car, but I did. And there were three little girls that were in that meeting, and I heard their voices as I was walking back to my car, saying, "Wait, wait." And I turned around, and they ran up to me, and they said, "We just wanted to thank you for saving the babies." That was a very humbling experience, and I can tell you, it's not me. It is a cooperation of government, of support services in our county, of adoption agencies, of public servants like you, and of nonprofits like the Bakersfield Pregnancy Center, that we are able to have saved 103 babies. And so to each of you, I say, thank you for helping us save babies. Thank you so much.
In keeping with the council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify as specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at a later time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received six public speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Rocky Studer, followed by Lisa Smith.
Welcome, Mr. Studer. Would you raise the microphone, please? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rocky Studer. I've been here before. It's ridiculous that little cities like Corcoran and now Maricopa are getting a pump track, and still, I've been doing this for 10 years, coming to these meetings, and you guys still won't do nothing for the kids. It's ridiculous. So I'm going to take this route. When I was 21, I got pulled over for riding my bicycle with no headlights. Ended up in Laredo. They almost beat me to death. In that 29 years, I've learned what this country does, what these cops do. They kill three humans a day on average in this country, 30 dogs a day on average in this country. This country has dropped more bombs than any other country. This country has only been the only country to drop nukes. This country has tested over 50% of the nukes, and then you guys want to stand behind God. That is the most funniest crap I've ever heard in my life. God only knows love. God only spreads love. Tell me, who would God drop a bomb on? Who would God start a war with? And then, another thing, this is all stolen land. This is all, all this land that you're doing, all this evil on, is stolen. You stole it, and then you want to call it America. We live in Earth. We're all humans. Like I said, you can keep saying that you do good. Yeah, you may do good, but you do a lot more evil than good, and your good does not, does not cover up all the evil you've done. Every bomb you drop kills innocent babies, animals, Earth, and like I said, you've dropped more bombs in any country. And you're going to sit up there and tell lies every day of your life and say, "God supports America. God blesses America"? Lying is a sin. God only knows love. God only spreads love. Keep doing what you're doing. You'll see what happens.
Next speaker, please.
Lisa Smith, followed by Adrian.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Lisa Smith. I thought I would come and tell you what's happened since the last time I was here. A week after I was here, and I did hear from Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you so much for that. A week after that, I was driving down Stein Road and found four 12-year-olds playing on the elevated freeway embankment because the gate wasn't locked. So I promptly went home and did what I needed to do to make sure these kids were safe. And then I went home and I started making phone calls and got voicemail after voicemail after voicemail after voicemail. And you got to remember, I'm the person who knows the phone numbers. So then I started sending out mass emails, and I think you received the photos and some of those emails. And I went by the next day, and the gate was still unlocked. So I did it all over again. And then I finally, out of frustration, called the mayor's office, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for your contact with me multiple times. And we were finally able to get a lock on the gate, a little tiny master lock. And today, I found it broken again. Now, in between those two things, Zach and I met because we had a previously scheduled appointment, and he spent a horrendous amount of time out with me looking at these lots that you've inherited, and now it's your responsibility to manage. And he came up with some really good ideas, and I threw a couple at him that made him groan, but he is considering. Today, I found the lock missing again. And because Zach gave me his personal cell phone number, I was able to reach him, and then I thought, "What happened to the lady who was trying to call a half an hour before me?" So I've gotten a lot of referrals to staff. He's got a great plan that he's been talking to me about. Here's what I'm here to ask you to do. We put up with ages of, "It's not our property. It's the contractor. The contractor's responsibility." The contractor didn't do it. The contractor turned it over to you when you had your big bicycle ride down the middle of the Centennial Corridor. It's been your responsibility since then. I want a deadline. I want posted signage telling people where to call. Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm aware. I want to know that in two months' time, you have a safety plan and a patrol plan for this neighborhood, because I don't want kids playing on the freeway again.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We appreciate your caring. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Ms. Smith, thank you so much for visiting us again at the city council. I really appreciate how much you advocate for your neighborhood and for our community. I wish that more Bakersfield residents cared to advocate as much as you do. I appreciate all the effort. I also want to just give a quick acknowledgement to Renee Williams at Real Property, who also has been part of responding to some of these concerns, especially as it relates to the gate and the particular locks on the property. Of course, our Public Works Director want to thank you as well for all of your effort and for spending what I think was over an hour with Ms. Smith and a special little ride-along recently. That certainly demonstrates your commitment to getting it right, and I think we all want to get it right, Ms. Smith. I think there's a couple of issues, as I am better understanding the surrounding area. Part of this area is actually in the county, and so when we talk about safety and security, a safety plan, that would also have to include the county sheriff's office. Am I correct on that, Mr. Clug?
Yes, Councilmember.
Okay. I'm also aware that there are some still remnant parcels from the construction of the Centennial Corridor. What that means is, you know, the city went out, bought a bunch of properties, several hundred properties, to construct the Centennial Corridor. We now have remaining parcels that we didn't use that weren't part of the alignment. Some of those properties will actually be sold, and there's state and federal guidelines that dictate how we go through that sale, and we're going through that process now. That's the good news, is that I think we're very close to actually moving forward with the sale of many of those properties. The harder part is that there's certain properties that actually aren't considered remnant parcels. They're actually part of the right-of-way, and those areas will actually be, become the jurisdiction and responsibility of Caltrans. And so part of, and Zach, you're going to have to help me out here, but part of the reason why we placed gates adjacent to the right-of-way or the alignment is because we were trying to meet Caltrans standards that have been established so that they have access to maintain that property.
That is correct. It's, they require so much width for the whole freeway, not just the road itself, but the embankment and everything, so that they can properly maintain it and get their crews out there to maintain it.
Okay, and we're working on the lock issue for the gates?
Yes, there's a number of issues going down to street cleaning, weeds, incomplete sidewalks, fencing that gets torn down, gate locks that get broken, homelessness-related issues. So there's a number of issues.
Okay. So again, Ms. Smith, thank you so much for raising these concerns, and, you know, I would like to communicate to all the residents who live within the city and also south of Stockdale who live within the county pocket, that it is the commitment of the city to address these issues as quickly as possible to gain clarity. And I think your idea of some sort of posted signage is not a bad idea. It's something similar to what we do with vacant properties, what I've asked the city to do in downtown, and it's actually going to be a referral that I'm going to make tonight, that we've worked towards doing something that helps provide clarity within the community related to who actually is responsible for each property. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Adrian, followed by Robert Hooks.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Adrian, and I'm here to thank the city for the road improvements that has been going on the past couple years. I've been using them specifically, the pedestrian and bike safety. These new green stripes have really helped me get along through the community safely. Union has been a crazy street, and now with the traffic slowed down, I'm able to use the bike path right, and I feel safer. This has not something that has been new. It's, you know, I would say the good road movement was started in the late 1800s, and a lot of it was to build a better road, not just for farm or rural areas, but for also bike and pedestrian. And so we want to make sure that that continues, and, you know, very early on, I would say, other cities in California has already been doing this, and I'm glad to see it, especially because we've had many casualties, accidents with not only adults but minors on bikes along through Bakersfield. And so to focus on bike and pedestrian safety, personally, I think that is the sound of something better, which is your motto, and so I think that we can continue. And so I think that we can continue with that path, and it's going to make a big change in Bakersfield. And that's really all, all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Robert Hooks, followed by Hector Hernandez.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, hi. My name is Robert Hooks. And so I see that we're kind of in unprecedented times again with the changes in Washington. And it seems to me that with the diversity of our population and industries in Bakersfield and in Kern County, that we really have the opportunity to show how, and maybe even set the example for the nation, how we can work together to solve problems. I planned to ask a couple of questions, but I was trying to figure out how this works. So I'll just make a couple of statements. So I am hoping that we are working to help the farmers recover some of the money that were frozen from the USDA funding freeze that came out of Washington. And I also hope that we are not planning to change our DEI policy, or eliminate our DEI policy based on some of the guidance that's coming out of Washington. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hooks. Next speaker, please.
Hector Hernandez, followed by Olivia Snyder.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Hector Hernandez. Hector Hernandez, Jr., to be, to be clear. I come from Miramonte High. I'm pretty sure you guys saw what happened today, the walkout and all this movement that was happening. This was happening, we, we did, I was the one who technically organized all of them, but I was able to get all the schools in Kern, Kern County to help walk out today. The problem was, a lot of the schools and a lot of the students that were there with parents that I was talking to, like, one-on-one, a lot of them said that the schools prohibited them from walking out. Some of the schools, I'm not going to mention which school. One of the schools threatened the students that were in leadership and they're in, in their ASB, that if they are part of the walkout, that they would be demoted from their position. Those, and there's a school where they literally locked the front doors. They locked all their gates for the students not to get out. One of the students had to sneak out of school, and her mom was waiting for her to pick her up. So that's how she was able to get to today's walkout. So my question is to you guys, why are you guys trying to hush the, quiet the kids down and prevent them from exercising their First Amendment right? Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Next speaker, please.
Olivia Snyder.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez, thank you so much for coming out today and addressing your concerns. Also, thank you for your leadership that you demonstrated. I want to communicate to you that, that the high school district, high schools are governed by the Kern High School District, and they actually have a governing board, the Kern High School District Board of Education. And they meet also on a regular basis. I encourage you to go to that Board of Education, where they make the policies, they actually set the policy for, for high schools within the Kern High School District. We don't, at this dais, set policy for the high school district. But thanks again for being here today, and I'm more than happy to reach out to you after this meeting to help.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi. My name is Olivia Snyder, and I'm representing Snyder's. I want to say thank you for all the efforts of making Bakersfield safer with bicycle paths. And the bicycle path on Union has been great. We do have a lot of customers who rely on bicycles for transportation, so it allows them to get to the store, so that they can safely fix their bike or get what they need on their bike. I'm also hoping that it has a compound effect, where there is a lot of accidents on Union and Niles, is because it's a three-lane street, people are going very fast, but we're hoping that there's going to be a little bit less accidents on that, that corner as well. So I just wanted to say thank you guys for all your efforts and everything that you're putting forth in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder, and thank you for your family's investment in our community for years and years. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. Is that the end of non-agenda?
Merica, that was our final non-agenda speaker.
And now would you call for those on the agenda, please? If they are to speak at this time. Actually, we don't have any right now.
Merica, we've received five public speaker cards regarding items listed on today's agenda. The first public speaker is Cindy Wade, regarding item 7E2.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi. My name is Cindy Wade, and I want to read what I have to say, because I want to say it really fast, so I can get my two minutes in. It says, "I want to thank the City Council for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. This is my first public announcement that I have made regarding my endeavor that I have been working seven days a week, 12 to 15 hours a day for the last two year, three years. Even though I am a nonprofit, Animal Solution, this is my first grant I've ever requested. I'm grateful that there is an opportunity to see improvement in the Old Town Kern area. Even though I do not live in the East Side, I have spent 45 years of my life there, more than I do in my own home area. I have been very involved in Bethany Ministries, which is a ministry that owned 14 pieces of property right in the hub of Old Town Kern. Throughout the entire time I've been working in this area, I have witnessed a severe problem with stray cats and dogs, dead cats and dogs on the road, and even abuse and packs of dogs and sick and injured. I personally, throughout the years, have done everything I knew to intercede. It's literally taken hundreds and hundreds of cats. I have, at my own expense, trying to, to change their future. After years, I came to the conclusion that you cannot rescue yourself out of this problem. I purchased a piece of property, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, at 601 Nile Street, which is a building built in 1928. It was a church. I made a decision, the best way to see the change to its best in the next generation, and educate our children on how to care for and be responsible pet owners. After purchasing the building, I rescued 70 kittens and 30 cats from one house across from my building. I have worked very hard to transform this building to look like a castle, a castle of hope. This is where children will come to the castle, and they will be taught a fun and exciting way and prayerfully that will never forget. I want this building to forevermore be for the community, to be used to advocate for the well-being of animals. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Ms. Wade, and thank you again for your family's investment through Bethany Ministries, your mom and you, and I know how much you care about that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I have my request on.
Okay, I can't do it. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Ms. Wade, thank you so much for being here tonight and for all of your work in ministry throughout the years. I've had the honor of knowing you and your family for 20 years now, I think. And Pastor Ethel was a gem and an amazing spiritual leader for many, many people throughout the community. And Bethany Ministries was a real beacon of light on Niles and Monterey area. And I, I know that the Castle of Hope will be that as well. So I'm, I'm happy to support this tonight and work with you on this project. And thank you for your commitment in Old Town Kern. Blessings on you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Merica, the next four speakers are all speaking regarding item 7E5. The first speaker is Jessica Kirchner.
Just a reminder, she's coming down. Each speaker's given a two-minute time limit, and the agenda item is limited to 20 minutes total. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Go ahead. Welcome.
Good evening, Merica and councilmembers. My name is Jessica Kirchner. I am the CEO of Impact Sciences. Our contract is before the City Council tonight. It is on the consent calendar, but if there are any questions about the item, I'm here and available to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kirchner. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Merica. I'm sorry, my name is Fernando Villa, and I here, am here on item 7E5 as well. Good evening, Merica and members of the City Council. We're here simply, we have two other speakers. As, as Jessica Kirchner mentioned, we're here to answer any questions. We realize that this item, the two contracts under this item, are under the consent calendar and will not likely be pulled for public discussion, but if they are by any council member, we're here to answer any questions. We're very excited to see the council moving forward on taking action on these items and the project to which it pertains, and we're very pleased to see you proceeding forward. So thank you very much. I think the other two speakers on this item would also say the same thing, but I don't mean to speak for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Villa. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Haddock. I'm with HKS Architects. Also, as Fernando mentioned, pertaining to item 7E5 on the agenda. As Fernando, as Fernando mentioned, we're just here to answer any questions that may pertain to the contract that's up for approval on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello. I'm David Henderson, also with HKS Architects, and, and for item, this, that's been mentioned before, and we're, we're just here to answer questions, and we've reviewed the contract and have no issues with it, so.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other public speakers?
Merica, that was our final public speaker.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appointments, item 6A, one appointment, Ward 6 alternate member to the Youth Commission to a term to expire July 2025. Three applications for appointment have been received from John O., Malachi Lopez, and Oscar Serrano.
Thank you. This appointment is by Ward. Therefore, I'm going to call on Councilmember Bashir Tosh to share his alternate Youth Commission nomination for Ward 6. Councilmember?
After reviewing all three applications, it was a little difficult to decide between three amazing individuals that really want to get involved and see the best for our community. After spending some time reading through the applications and, and being thoughtful with my decision, I decided to nominate John O. for the position as alternate for Ward 6.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion on that?
I do.
You have a motion?
Motion is approved with Council, with Vice Mayor Corr and Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Mr. O., thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7I for approval. A staff memorandum was provided regarding item 7E4, requesting removal of the item from tonight's agenda. A second staff memorandum was provided regarding item 7I1, removing the item from the agenda for further analysis.
Thank you. And I see no requests for recusal, and Councilmember Gonzalez wishes to pull 7E1. Councilmember Gonzalez, would you like to make a motion on the rest?
Make a motion to approve this consent calendar with the exception of 7E1.
And then the items that have been removed. Yes. You have a motion?
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Corr and Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. And now 7E1.
Yes. Seven E1 is regarding the naming rights agreement with Dignity Health for the Arena, Theater, and Convention Center. Colleagues, as you know, the naming rights for the Mechanic Bakes Arena, Theater, and Convention Center expired on January 31st, 2025, and we are so fortunate to have wonderful community partners in Dignity Health who have stepped up to sponsor and to agree to the naming rights of the Arena, Theater, and Convention Center. I'm just so excited about this partnership. The arena and the whole facility has been an important asset to the city of Bakersfield and has really contributed to the continued revitalization of downtown Bakersfield. And I know that that success will only continue with this, with this 10-year partnership agreement. I do want to recognize Ken Keller, who's here with Dignity Health tonight. Thank you so much for being here, as well as Adam Miller and Chad Carpenter with the arena. Thank you so much for all the work that you do and getting this to the dais here tonight. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve 7E1.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Corr and Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Next item, please. Thank you, Dignity Health.
Public hearings.
Thank you. Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself and make your statements succinctly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to Steph's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of Steph's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash, indicating your time is up. Quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing item 9A, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act Hearing, on behalf of the Housing Authority of the County of Kern. Number one, conduct a public hearing. Number two, adopt a resolution approving the plan of finance. And number three, indemnification agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I would just give one preface that I give every time we have one of these hearings, which we shorten them up, call them TEFRA hearings. We are, well, the entities seeking after these resources are required to hold a public hearing before a public body, but these are not funds that the city spends. These are not funds that the city oversees. We actually have no fiscal fiduciary responsibility with these funds, but we're facilitating these public hearings to help them meet their legislative obligations to do so. With that, we are available to, to answer any questions about this, and Jenny Byers can, you know, provide some high-level perspective on what these funding allocations are identified for. But again, these are not city funds or funds that we would have an obligation for.
Thank you. Ms. Byers, some high-level points?
High-level, this is for a $12 million request from Housing Authority for their bonding of the Nile Street project. It's 51 affordable housing units.
Thank you. And at this time, public hearing item 9A is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to? It's 8A, sorry. No, let's see. We had a change.
It's both. It, it constitutes both, 8A and 9A.
8A and 9A. We had a little change. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to Steph's recommendation? Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in support of Steph's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that over the years, through the Redevelopment Agency and for, and the Planning Commission as well, I, I've been so overwhelmingly impressed by the relationship with the Housing Authority and the job that you guys have done on all the projects in town. I had an opportunity when I was on the Redevelopment Agency to go to the Bay Area and receive an award, and one of those projects really was a project that was led by the Housing Authority. So I, I always give them a lot of leeway when they come before the Planning Commission or anything else, because they do top-notch projects. You know, you drive by their projects, and they don't appear to be low-end You know, you drive by their projects and they don't appear to be low-income housing. They're, you know, they're just very, very nicely designed and well-maintained projects. So I'm happy to support anything at this point that the Housing Authority is asking. So I would make that motion to approve that if there was no other speakers. Thank you, Mayor.
I don't see any other requests for speakers. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion was approved with Vice Mayor Corr and Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Reports, item 10A, a public safety update presentation will be provided by the Bakersfield Police Department Chief Greg Terry.
Thank you. Before we begin, please note that if you're here to speak on reports, item 10A, the city clerk will call for public statements after Steph's presentation. Each speaker, again, will be limited to two-minute time limit and a 20-minute total. City Manager Clegg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. This presentation is provided in response to referral by a request by Councilmember Smith to clarify some 2024 traffic data information. There was a public commenter who had shared some information, but it was at really countywide level and just a good opportunity to reflect accurate data and information that was reflective of city-specific incidents related to traffic safety. Chief Terry is actually unwell right now. We wish him well. But Assistant Chief Brent Stratton will be helping to walk through this presentation. But I'll go ahead and get us started, if I may, City Clerk.
So Chief Stratton will help kick us off here. But I just wanted to, again, set some context. We have begun collecting much more traffic data than we have historically. As a matter of course of law enforcement, we've always collected good data. But we've actually been investing in software that helps us to better analyze and present that data in graphic representations to just really help us be more thoughtful about how we do interventions. And so that's reflective, I would say, two years ago, we were putting together tables and graphs through some of the Microsoft Office tools. And today, we can provide to the city council much more meaningful data analysis of traffic collision data, as well as many other data points. And so this is a high level. We receive a monthly report from the police department. And I've shared that out a few times with the city council as a whole to reflect on that data. And so tonight, we're going to just provide a summary presentation for the public. But again, we've got good data that we're tracking on a regular basis to help us really understand the nature of what the issues are that we're facing. Chief Stratton?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and give you a briefing on traffic safety and some of the traffic safety efforts that the police department has been making. For 2024, as we closed out some of our numbers, the good news is that we were able to see an overall reduction in total fatal collisions, as well as a significant reduction in DUI-related fatal collisions. We did see a small increase of overall total injury collisions. And as an agency, we really try to focus on the reduction of head-on and broadside collisions. Those are the collisions that have the greatest impact to our community and have the lowest survivability rates. So those are the areas that we really want to try to focus on. We've been using, as City Manager has talked about, trying to take a more data-informed approach and having the data really direct where our resources, where our intervention efforts are going to come from. So, you know, in years past, we've been seeing some increases. And we're thankful to, because of some of the efforts, the partnerships with the city, some of the community partnerships and the investment, to see a reduction in 2024 was a good year. We still have a lot of work to do. So you'll see in the bottom right-hand corner where we talk about primary collision factors as we break down our data, trying to inform what is it that contributes to most accidents? And we see that speed and DUIs, pedestrians in the roadway, as well as the ignoring of traffic signs and signals running red lights, still continues to be the biggest factor that leads towards our collisions. We brought forward a three-year trend for you, just to see where 2024 ended up in respect to the previous years as well. And I talked about some of the numbers that we were seeing really in 2022, which were much too high. And we've been able to really bring back a reduction to our community in 2023, as well as in 2024 in many of the areas. One of the areas where we saw an increase, as you can tell, is in the areas of bicycle collisions that has still risen from 2 in '22 to 3 in '23 and going to five of them in 2024. So that's an area that we want to continue to see improvement. And we're working with our Community Engagement Division to find ways that we can work to provide good messaging within the public and with our drivers to make sure that our roads are safe for those who choose to use bicycles in our community. And I think there's been strong efforts made by the city in that regard, as well as with the police department within our enforcement. And that's something we want to continue to try to focus on because we want to bring a reduction to that number. But thankfully, in the other three areas, as it relates to pedestrians and vehicles and overall total number, we were able to see a reduction this year, thankfully. Breaking down some of the data a little bit further as it relates to fatal collisions, you'll see that five of our fatal collisions were DUI-related. I was actually a little bit surprised by that stat. I thought the numbers would be higher than they were. But, I mean, you can see that in other years, we've had a higher percentage of the fatal collisions have been DUI-related. And we saw a smaller percentage of them this year, which is a good thing to see. But we still want to bring more of a reduction next year. Excuse me. We talked about having a slight increase, approximately 1% increase on non-fatal injury collisions. This is, we've seen an unfortunate trend that you can see continuing to increase. So we still have more work that we can do as it relates to non-fatal injury collisions as well. We've really prioritized, again, some of the fatal collisions, some of the broadside head-on collisions, focusing our enforcement efforts at those intersections where we're seeing those. And, you know, some of the non-fatal injury collisions are things oftentimes rear-ending and things like that are things that we can really start to focus on. But our main focus has been on reducing the fatalities and trying to make the roadways more safe for our community. So this is an area that we want to bring some decreases and continue to focus on for next year. So again, this is just a brief snapshot, but I'm happy to do the very best that I can to answer any questions for you about some of our efforts and things that we're trying to do as it relates to education, as it relates to our enforcement. And the city has been doing an excellent job on working with roadway design as well, trying to find some answers and trying to take a multi-pronged approach to making our roadway more safe for our city.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding this item?
Merco, we have not received any speaker cards regarding this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I'm mostly familiar with the engineering changes. Those are easy to see.
Yes, sir.
And I work with Public Works and staff on those. As far as the, what efforts we're making on education and how we're changing the enforcement, I'd like to hear some more information on that.
Yes, sir. As it relates to our enforcement, you know, we've been able to, the city has continued to invest in the police department. We've been able to increase the number of officers assigned to our traffic division steadily every year. And when academy graduates, you know, we've assigned officers to a variety of different areas throughout the department. But traffic is one of the areas we've continued to assign officers where their sole duty is to be 40 hours a week to be focused on traffic enforcement. We're working through that via patrol car. We've been able to expand our motor program. We believe that our motors are able to help do a lot of traffic enforcement that is much more difficult to do in a car. We've been able to have our commercial enforcement as well, working with a dedicated officer, working with, you know, large vehicles, big rigs and things like that. We've been able to expand our major collision investigations team because when we have these fatal accidents, it's like working a murder investigation and the amount of work that goes into them. And there's a lot of expertise and equipment and training that goes into that. So we've been able to develop that, to develop investigators who are assigned to conducting hit-and-run investigations and the follow-up work to be able to apprehend those who commit these crimes as well. So those are some of the areas on the enforcement side. As the city manager alluded to, we're becoming much more proficient with our data and letting our data inform where our enforcement is going to be, when it's going to occur as well. So those are some of the efforts we're doing enforcement-based. We've been working with our partners with the California Highway Patrol. We've had investment via grants with the Office of Traffic Safety and working on increasing the number of DUI checkpoints and things that we do. We've also been able to have the Office of Traffic Safety to be able to allow us to give us the authority to not just have fixed checkpoints, but to have some roving DUI patrols as well in an effort to maximize what that enforcement looks like. We've tried to increase our messaging towards the community around DUI enforcement. And so we still have a lot of work that we can do within the Community Engagement Division. We are open to any partnership that somebody may have within our community of things that the police department can do from an education standpoint to try to amplify our message. We're, excuse me, we're very open to that. And we're looking for ways that we could do better in that regard as well, sir.
If I may as well, Councilmember, just as far as just education broadly in general, we've been fortunate to be able to partner with Blue Zones, who've helped us with several events that are trying to help foster not only more healthy and active lifestyles, but also better safety as it relates to pedestrian and bicycle practices on our, you know, city roadways and pathways. But I would acknowledge to this council that we've received referrals and suggestions to create more of an education campaign. And so that's one of the things that we're working on through marketing communications, as well as partnering with the school districts. That's one of the specific sub-elements of education that was requested by this council in the Multimodal Committee was to create an education campaign around schools. So we're working on an education campaign that is not only for schools, but just also for distracted driver and just safer, you know, driving and use of our, you know, roadways throughout the city. And that's pending. We need to get that back to the city council that is more of a sort of city-wide holistic campaign. But we have had some good targeted efforts on some specific law enforcement areas like DUIs and then the Blue Zones efforts. But we've got a more of an education campaign in the works for city-wide efforts.
Thank you. Yeah, you just sent me the red light numbers for the years. I think we only have eight intersections out of, I don't know. Public Works, how many intersection, traffic signal intersections do we have? 100 and some?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Smith, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head. But yes, every arterial.
Yeah, I'm sure. 100 plus, and eight of them have red light cameras. And only certain movements have those cameras on them. And we've got 12,000 violations over the years.
Yes, sir.
People are running red lights on a daily basis all over the city, so.
Yes, sir. I'd say we have, I believe it's 10 intersections with 16 different approaches. And by approach, it's a direction. We, you know, we have been studying and working about what an expansion could look like. And we've tried to prioritize those areas where we've had, again, the head-on and the broadside collisions is where we've tried to really do some research for what expansion might be. We've also tried to look at the areas where we get community complaints, but where we see just high speeds and people driving at high speeds to really try to slow people down. The DUI is one component of it, but really just, we've got to slow down throughout the entire of our community. And I think we can see some really strong reductions if we can just get folks to drive a little slower.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I talked in the past about all around the, all the schools, the councils' holes talked about that, you know, that's a problem. And I know it's hard to address all the schools. So I'm going to give you one specific referral. Liberty High School, you know, is just down the street from me. It's on the corner of an arterial and a collector. Jueta's a collector at that point. And there's just, there's no guidance. There's no striping. There's no, and people passing on the ride, kids walking across the street. I mean, just, it's pretty random and opportunities for bad things. And I think that, you know, we could do some guidance along that street and do some striping to help. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez?
May I say just one thing to Councilmember Smith as well regarding some of the schools? Just wanted to relay, as we've been able to increase our staffing, we've been able to increase the number of school resource officers. And we plan and continue to grow that as well. And that's one of the things that we ask our school resource officers to do when we have five for the entire city. But part of their efforts is to maintain some of that high visibility around some of the schools as well. And we've been working with our partners at the Kern High School District to really encourage them to work on some proactive traffic enforcement regarding their high schools as they have statutory authority regarding, in some of the areas around their high schools. And I've seen that they've begun training one of their officers on traffic enforcement. And we're starting to see a little bit of that there. So that's an area we can continue to lean in. On the enforcement side, I realize you were talking about infrastructure, but it gave me a thought that I wanted to relay to you that is something that we're working on as well, sir.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you so much, Chief, for the report. Thank you, Mr. Clegg, for recognizing Councilmember Smith's referral. I had an observation. I was looking at this data, which is really helpful, by the way, for us to make policy decisions in the future. Excuse me. But as we look at, you know, 2022 vis-à-vis 2024, I'm looking at the pedestrian non-fatal injury collisions really has stayed the same. We had 133 non-fatal injury collisions with pedestrians in 2022. In 2024, there was 136. And yet, if we look at fatal collisions related to pedestrians, in 2022, we had 37. We dropped down to 2024, so more than half in 2024, 17. What can we, you're the expert, Chief, what can we deduce is changing in terms of the reduction of fatalities related to pedestrians?
It's a great question. As I look at the data and you kind of focus in on some of the pedestrian component to it, too, it's good to, you know, on one hand, it's good to see that the number of fatal collisions is dropping. So I'm wondering, then, I'd need to dig a little bit deeper if that means these are, you know, slower speed issues. And the slower the speeds, the, your percentage, your chance of survivability goes up.
Right.
So I'm wondering if that could be a component of it. But I don't know exactly what it's attributed to. I will tell you that pedestrian enforcement is something that we're working on as well in trying to take maximum efforts that we can and working on education and enforcement to try to keep people from being out of the roadway as well.
I would love to do a little bit more analysis on that. I would love to believe that some of the improvements we've been making to our roads and reducing.
Speeds?
Speeds and the green paint and some of the additional geometry improvements have really contributed to this reduction. But I'm just surmising at this point. It would be helpful to have some sort of analysis from the experts. Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember and Mayor and Council. Another former conversation, I can't recall if it was a specific referral, but we've been acting on the discussion, is to create a working group that can really dissect specific instances to understand what happened for a particular collision or incident. And that group is also talking about just looking at how do we dig a little bit deeper in analyzing the overall numbers to understand what is that data telling us? Our partners, again, at Blue Zones have offered to, you know, do some of that work with us. We also have a coalition that was already in place that's looking at some of that. And so we're combining some of our staff efforts and a pre-existing coalition and our Blue Zones partners to form a new group that's really going to look at some of those instances, kind of what we would call a case conferencing of those instances, and look also at some of the aggregate data to dig a little bit deeper in that.
Perfect. One last question. Do we collect data related to collisions caused by distracted drivers?
We do. And I can get that for you. I know that, going back to the first page, that is one of our, I'm sorry, it's not one of our primary collision factors. I thought that it was a higher percentage of occurrence than it has. But we do have that information as well, and it's something I can get for you.
I think that would be helpful in future presentations, and I'd appreciate it. I know anecdotally, I've observed so many. I know anecdotally, I've observed so many distracted drivers just today and that's every day.
I think so, too.
And I think it's becoming more and more of an issue with all of the various different technology and vehicles now and with everyone with a smartphone and other devices. I think it's a serious problem. And I still have a outstanding referral that the city launch a distracted driver campaign where we have, you know, go out full court press throughout the community with lots of different community partners to make people more cognizant of the real impacts of distracted driving and how many people have died as a result of collisions because the driver was distracted on their phone. And we need to, we need to raise that issue in the public, much like, you know, seatbelts was an issue in the 80s and drunk driving. This is becoming a serious issue in our community and it's very dangerous. So I hope that we can continue to do that. I know I have some items on my to-do list as well regarding that and I'm looking forward to partnering with staff to launch that campaign.
I couldn't agree with you more. As I think through it with our, with the fatal collision, I could see how we would be able to collect that information because we would have the ability pursuant to search warrants to seize cell phones to be able to determine whether somebody was on their phone at the time. With non-fatal collisions generally, you know, that's not something that we seize and so it would be reported, it would be dependent on somebody self-reporting that. So I could see some difficulties with gathering the data, but I think anecdotally, I agree 100%. And from an education standpoint, that's something our Community Engagement Division would be very happy to partner with, with our Traffic Division and yourself to some ideas and how we can message that or move it out. I think it's absolutely in line with our, our mission of following through with education. Not everything is enforcement, some of it's education and then, you know, obviously design environmental factors as well, but this is definitely falls in line with what we'd like to do. So I'd be happy to partner with you on that, sir.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Several years ago, when we, many members of this council, myself and along with leadership at the staff level, when we set out on this mission to make our streets safer, I think it was very clear that the goal was to literally save lives.
That's right.
And I think that this data shows that we are doing just that. And I just want to say thank you to you, your staff, Chief Terry's leadership, but also, you know, everyone else who has been a part of the broad coalition to bring about this change. You know, I see a couple of folks and friends from Blue Zones in the room. Thank you for your leadership. If there's any way we can keep you beyond the five years of your initial contract, please let us know. But there are so many who have been crucial to this work and thank you to city staff. Special thank you to Greg and now Zach for leading this effort through the Public Works Department. It has taken a mindset shift from a planning standpoint, but also from a community standpoint, something that we need to, you know, embrace and get used to. Makes us feel a little bit uncomfortable, but I think it's important for us to understand that if we're saving lives, then it's something that we need to address too. But enforcement, enforcement is a critical component to that and I just want to say thank you to both you and Chief Terry for embracing that and being a part of the solution. Many years ago, we struggled to be able to have enough officers who are enforcing, you know, appropriate speeds on the streets. Can you give us a sense of how many more officers today there are either on motorcycles or in traditional vehicles who are able to do this level of enforcement for us?
Sure. I'd like to first thank you for your initial comments, but you said it perfectly. The police department is but one very small portion of the team in the city deserves a tremendous amount of credit for the work they've been doing. Again, we talk about things from an enforcement and education and environmental standpoint. And the environmental standpoint is really the city and our community partners that you've referenced in the council's leadership. So you, you know, there's other folks other than the police department that deserve the thanks for that. From an enforcement standpoint, we have been able to grow. I don't have the exact numbers handy, but we here at, I believe it's 16 motor officers and when we started out on this, we were at zero. So, I mean, we've grown tremendously there. I don't know that our Traffic Division is the biggest that it's ever been, but it's certainly the biggest that I can remember in the 21 years that I've been here. So with police service technicians, with officers, with sergeants and dedicated lieutenant, we're, you know, we're well in the mid to high 30s, number of people that that's, that's what they do. I don't know what the exact number looks like. I think the data will tell us that. When we see a decrease in red light camera citations, when we continue to see year after year after year decrease in fatal collisions and decrease in injury collisions and when our enforcement, you know, is mirroring that and matching that, then I think we'll have a good idea that we've got a proper handle on it. For the here and now, we intend to continue to increase as we get academies and as we grow, we're continuing to allocate resources towards traffic because we do believe it's an area that's, that's important for the entirety of our city and our community. And while there's some positive trends over the last two years, we recognize that there's still a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done and as our city continues to grow in geography as well as in population, I'm concerned about those challenges, quite frankly, but it's something that we'll continue to work to meet.
Fantastic. Thank you. And since you brought it up, I recently heard that there was a pretty significant increase in the amount of officers that we have, including the recent academy. I would love for you to share a quick update to the public and to the council as to where we are with that complement.
Sure. Our overall allowed complement is 512. We're sitting closer to 468, 470, something like that. We have another academy slated to start on June 30th. We're going through applicants and the background process now, but we're hoping to be able to close that gap significantly to be able to get as close to complement as we can. So the council and our community has invested in our department tremendously. We've had a lot of great support from human resources and other areas in helping with our hiring and recruiting and we're really hoping to be able to retain the officers that we have and keep them here in our city and our community to help push us to closer to reaching that goal. But we've still got a ways to go, but we're closer than we've ever been.
City Manager Clegg, do you wish to speak?
I was only going to reflect that our complement on the budget was raised from 407 to 507, then to 512, but filled positions when the goal was first set to increase officers by 100. We had 385 filled positions. And Chief, say the number again where we're at today?
68, sir.
Fantastic. Thank you for that clarification. Just a couple more questions. In my research and in talking to the city manager, it's my understanding that nearly 40% of all collisions are taking place in the late evening and early morning. Can you provide some clarity and maybe just some anecdotal information as to why that might be the case? You know, I'm assuming related to folks driving under the influence, potentially also some lighting challenges, but I would love to hear from you as the expert on this issue.
Yes, some of the data on the first slide, I can just read it to you, that 39% of all of our fatal collisions occur between 9:00 PM and 3:00 AM. And that the majority of them, 11 of them occurred on a Saturday and eight of them were occurring on a Wednesday. I don't really have an explanation for the Wednesday. That seems, I don't understand what that looks like from a Saturday night perspective. That makes the most amount of sense to me. I do think that there's the potential for people being out. It's the weekend. I think, you know, the timeframe in which it's occurring, I think we could deduce that alcohol has an impact in that for sure. But the other opinions would be, you know, they'd be anecdotal and I'm not 100% certain about it, but we've tried to mirror our deployment strategies. And that's kind of what I mean by being data informed. We want this to inform how we deploy and when we deploy. If we're having the most amount of our accidents between 9:00 PM and 3:00 AM, then we want to make sure that that's when we have the most amount of officers out there. And we're hoping that a high visibility drives that down, that enforcement drives that down. So we want them to be available during this timeframe and not, and maybe staff minimally when incidents are occurring until we can get to a spot where we have, you know, a robust staffing at, you know, at 24/7. But for the here and now, we're trying to do the best that we can to let this inform when we're going to assign people, where we're going to assign them, to try to bring these numbers down.
Fantastic. I'll just finish my comments by saying that I agree with my colleagues and with the city manager that I think it's really important that we get the data to demonstrate the reasons why we are seeing improvements in safety on our streets. I've also heard from city staff that there are really three top areas that we've identified throughout the city. Please, Chief or city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, but the first being Monterey and Beale, the second being 23rd and 24th Street, and then the third being Brundage Lane near Madison Street. I would appreciate it if you could shed some light on those three areas. And then I saw that there was a potential strategy around Monterey and Beale, but I didn't see strategies for the second two.
Sure.
And would love to understand what our approach is going to be.
Yeah, so the report, is there something, you know, as the city manager spoke about us improving with some of our data and talked a few times about letting the data inform our strategies, we've really looked at where are we having the most amount of collisions? And those are the top three locations of where we're having the most amount of collisions. So it's really not, really not rocket science. That's where we should send police officers and traffic officers to try to do the best that we can to tailor our enforcement, our high visibility around those locations. And so we're continuing to dive into that data to determine what is the best approach? Does it have something to do with, is that, would those be areas for, you know, red light camera expansion? Is that where we just literally drop anchor and put a motor officer there? What is it that we do to try to show a reduction from those? But those are intersections that are pretty highly traveled. So as you can imagine, it makes sense that we're going to have the most amount of collisions there. So those are areas of focus for us and trying to make sure that we can bring a reduction to those areas. You know, anytime you have an accident, there's always going to be a top three location. And so we try to look at this thing on a month-to-month basis. And if every month we're seeing the same intersections, then we know we need to prioritize that. If it's, if it's starting to rotate and it's moving around, okay, that might be a little bit harder to pin down. But for the last, if for the next couple of months, we continue to see that there, then we'll know that those will be the areas of priority and focus for our traffic officers.
Fantastic. City Manager or Mr. Meyer, is there anything that you would like to add particularly on, you know, the infrastructure, infrastructure improvements that we could potentially make that could potentially help the situation in those three areas?
Thank you, Councilmember. I was going to say no, but then you said infrastructure and I'll as well say yes. You know, we actually have significant infrastructure planned, a long monitor that's been funded through some grant funding. We also have a complete streets project that has been under design for the Monterey Niles area. And so again, as we look at some of these highest priority areas, we are looking at whether or not the built environment adjustments can make an impact and trying to prioritize which ones we get into design, go get grant funding for and make upgrades as well.
Fantastic. Well, as always, thank you for the presentation and great work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of thoughts. The graphs show the last three years, but I'm looking at data from 2018 and at that time, we had total fatal collisions of 27 and 19 was 31. And then we started going up and then, like a lot of things in our society, COVID changed and in particular, traffic fatalities and speeds and stuff changed. And so we, we hit that peak at 22 and then we have reduction, which we've seen across the nation also. My point is, is that we're still not back to pre-COVID type numbers, 27, 30. We're substantially above that at 44 total fatalities. And so keep working on it, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Message. So that's just the point. And I've always said that when we look at graphs and, you know, timelines, the longer is the better. And so, you know, a five to 10-year look on those types of things, I think, make more sense than just the last two or three.
Agreed. I definitely agree. I think it's good to be able to give us that longer, that longer-term perspective. I've had a harder time to be able to talk about what we were doing five years ago and many of us within our organization weren't in the positions we were in. So I'm a little more uninformed about what our strategies were, but I certainly think there's value in being able to look at it from a longer-term perspective. And I agree completely, we got a long, long way to go and that's kind of what I meant. I think our city has grown, it has grown, it's going to continue to grow and I'm concerned for sure. And so I know we still have, we got our work cut out for us. This is not, this is not spiking the football by any means. This is, I'm happy with some improvement, but I got a lot of work to do for you, sir.
Thank you. And I guess the other comment, you know, Union Avenue was the worst street in the city and we've seen substantial changes on that, both from Caltrans and from us. And so I would like, you know, maybe next year, a year from now, you know, let's look at long-term data on specifically on Union Avenue, what has it done in the last five to 10 years?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Bashir Tosh.
It's my turn. Not to take away from the millions and millions of dollars that we spend on trying to improve public safety, I'd like to bring up a really awesome point and that is the automotive industry and designing vehicles that have safety features that didn't exist two or three years ago. My car yells at me when it thinks I'm distracted and forces me to keep my eyes on the road. And as we continue to see cars grow and standard safety features be there across the board, these numbers are going to continue to drop without us spending even a penny on public safety. And of course, the numbers are going to be skewed because our city is growing over and over again. So a lot of the question like, why have the fatalities gone down? Cars have shifted from wanting to just protect the driver and the passengers to wanting to protect themselves. Cars stop well before even getting close to newer vehicles. But as we see older vehicles phased off of the roads that aren't equipped with safety features like that, like, you know, like seatbelts were brought about and have saved billions of lives. That number is going to continue to drop and drop and drop. Cars recognize pedestrians walking around them now, they stop, they hesitate, they alert you when you're distracted, when you're hugging a line, when you're getting close to things. They really don't just want to protect the passengers and drivers, they want to protect themselves from being destroyed and turned into rubble. So I don't want to take away from what we've done, but, you know, there's a lot of facts and truth to that and national numbers have, as you said, have reflected that. And we're going to see that continue to, to decrease as a whole, as things become more and more intelligent. But I think trying to, our biggest challenge is trying to get people to do the right thing. You know, there's a very small margin between controlling people and allowing people to, you know, be free to make stupid decisions. And I think the point is accountability. That's a huge thing. Something that I've really noticed over the last few years that I didn't really see growing up in this town was the street takeovers and intersection shutdowns and the droves of hundreds of kids on bicycles with no helmets taking over streets. And I often wonder, why is it happening and not being shut down? And they just continue to stroll. And I know it's a big need to tackle and it's like, how do you even begin to hold, you know, 500 kids on bicycles that are riding fixies down oncoming traffic? How do you hold them accountable? How do you stop, you know, 200 cars in an intersection spinning donuts? You know, I don't know, but I think those are important things to consider and look at. And I think that a lot of these things will solve themselves with time as technology upgrades, as we've seen that on not just a local, but a national level. I'd encourage anybody to kind of do some research behind that. It's pretty, pretty awesome. But I don't know what your thoughts are on the groups and the takeovers and that sort of thing?
Yeah, we've worked very hard to try to be as impactful on those as we can. We've worked with, we've, you know, previous California legislators have worked on some legislation that have, we've been able to take advantage of. We've gone throughout the state to find agencies that are doing it well. We've worked within our Traffic Division to be able to develop an understanding of the variety of different laws and vehicle inspection, things that we could do when you do have some of these vehicles detained. It is difficult. Anytime you're trying to detain several hundred people and you have to really determine who's a spectator, which may not be illegal, who's actively involved in these things, how are they being pushed out through social media? What are the things that we can do? So we've, we've taken a pretty strong enforcement stance with what we can. We've, I don't have the numbers for you, I can get them. And we've, we've made arrests, we've impounded vehicles, we've done a ton of citations. We do the best we can to try to corral and move them around, but they've become a little more nimble as well and there for a minute or two and gone and moved. Some of these things have been where you're taking over an intersection and some of them we've had homicides at, we've had shootings, we've seized firearms and a variety of different rifles at different events. And so it's been, it's not something that a single police officer can tackle themselves. It usually takes a coordinated response to be able to get towards that and it's something that we've, we've worked towards. that we've worked towards. Large amounts of oftentimes young people with bikes, do the kind of a takeover style on bikes, is it poses similar challenges, less dangerous than some of the examples I've given you that we've dealt with, but it does present some enforcement challenges for us as well. So I wouldn't say that there's been a reluctance to do it, but just a difficulty and a little bit of grappling on how to do it in chasing juveniles that are oftentimes not as compliant and just pulling over when an officer tries to stop them. And so you're chasing somebody on a bike, and how does that terminate oftentimes are some of the factors that we grapple with. But it is definitely something that we're working towards. We have made enforcement efforts towards that as well. But again, we have some area for room for improvement, for sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Coleman now.
Thank you, mayor.
Chief, thank you very much for this report. I really appreciate it. I think I agree with councilmember Smith that we probably need to see a little longer tail, but I understand that some of the data collection techniques have changed a little bit, so I don't know how accurate that would be. So that was kind of one of my questions is, how much of this can we attribute to the change in data collection? When did you start collecting this data?
Sure. I think we've always captured some that we can give you, the fatal collisions and X, and we've always captured that. But I would say that it's really been the last three years or so that we've really tried to become a little more data-informed. I would have told you, four years ago, I couldn't talk too much about data at all. Now, you know, I've got a propeller on my head, pretty much, you know, and I'm becoming a data geek. So we're learning as an agency. Our proficiency has grown, the council's invested in performance analysts for us, and we have more people that are trained, more equipment to be able to pull this data. So I think over the last couple of years, our data is better than it's ever been, but broad strokes of the number of collisions and fatal collisions, we have that information, and we can absolutely present that to you. I would struggle with giving you an analysis of it, because again, over the last couple of years, we've really started to get settled in our positions. And before that, there was, you know, a big shift within our agency. And so I think we'd have a hard time being able to give you an analysis going back farther than three or four years. But raw data numbers I have for you, sir.
On this, on the, I guess that's the first sheet, you kind of listed the primary collision factors. And this was actually, I just now noticed the word "fatal," so that was only for fatal accidents.
Yes, sir.
That wasn't for all accidents.
That's correct. And oftentimes, they mirror each other, that you see a lot of similarities between what occurs. But yeah, this is the main, we call them PCFs, the primary collision factors on fatal. But I can get the information too, as it relates to all the collisions.
I really just wanted to see if you had any, I know you have, these are the top four, I would assume. You didn't give us all of them, but is there any priority to them, or are they just listed here?
They're just listed here. I don't have them broken down by numbers. That is information I can get to have them ranked. But for us, you know, these are the things that, so for me, these are the things that I want our traffic officers focusing on. I don't need them writing parking tickets if that's not one of the primary collision factors, to come and bring 20 or 10, whatever. Parking citations isn't going to do anything to make our roadways more safe. These are the things that I want them focusing their efforts on, and these are the things that what their enforcement should be about. This is what our education should be about, to try to have a coordinated response, to really drive in and make sure that as an organization, we're focusing in on what we can do to try to show a reduction here.
Well, thank you for saying that, because we all worry about, you know, what the officers' priorities are in the streets. So it's really nice to know that you're paying attention to that in your training. Can you talk a little bit about signs and signals and what problems you're seeing that are contributing to these factors?
Yes, sir. That would mean running stop signs, running red lights and things like that, just not failing to stop at these intersections. So that's oftentimes is what contributes mostly to broadside collisions, is people blowing through intersections, and that leads to fatality. So when you have somebody blowing through an intersection, and then they're coming through at a high rate of speed, and then oftentimes, if there's an intoxication component to it, those really become, increase the likelihood of a fatal encounter tremendously.
So it's not a problem with the signals and the signs?
No, sir.
It's a problem with us ignoring them?
Yes, sir.
Right. And then the last thing I wanted to ask you about was, a couple of years ago, the legislature or the governor reduced the penalties for jaywalking and those kind of things. And I think that, you know, we've all been out on the road in the evening, and somebody will come darting out of the apartment building or run across the road, wearing dark clothes or bicyclists just riding out in front of you, no reflectors, no dark clothes, you can hardly see them, you know, and we all panic, we, you know, stop them. We managed not, most of us managed to not hit them.
Thanks, sir.
Sure, and some of them get hit. I guess my question to you is then, considering what the governor's orders were, what can be done about those kind of bad actors?
Sure. It's limited enforcement, for sure, but it's not completely taken it away. I don't have the law exactly memorized in my head, but it is, it limits enforcement to areas people are still not allowed to cross when dangerous. And so it still allows for the officers to be able to take enforcement action when we can. It's still just a citation, you give somebody a ticket, and it's, hopefully they show up to court and don't just crumble it up and throw away or never show up to court. So it's not, it's not something where there's a ton of teeth to it, but we do take action. We do have directed efforts focused on, for our officers focusing on people who are walking and that's dangerous to themselves and to drivers and people that are driving. So there is enforcement that we do focus on towards that, sir.
Okay. Thank you, chief. I have no further questions, mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Coleman. We need a motion to recede.
Motion to recede.
You have a motion, please cast your votes. Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you, mayor.
City manager, how long is the next segment anticipated to be?
It will be long enough that I advise a break.
We will, yes. And we will take a break as soon as we have the motion. Let's come back at 7:00. And I see in the audience, the representative of Assemblywoman, Dr. Jasmeet Bains. Thank you so much for your presence here.
Mayor, go. Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Corr and Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you, city clerk.
Wait. Right, we are reconvening. We need one more person. Oh, we have no business right now, but. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Reports item 10B, update on the Making Downtown Bakersfield Vision Plan.
Thank you. Again, public speakers will be received after staff's comments report. City Manager Clegg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to set a little bit of context for this presentation, as we had a lengthy question and answer on our last item and were conscious of time, we're going to expedite through this presentation because you have it in front of you and try and focus on the key issues and then question and answer as well. And then the other piece of context just is that we appreciated the referral from Councilmember Gonzalez to make an update or status on this plan because it was a 10-year plan and we're about five years through that 10-year plan. But since it was just long ago enough, it's good to come back to it and be reminded of the efforts that are around this plan. And lots has been happening, more is still to come. And our Economic and Community Development Director Jenny Byers will walk through those highlights and then we'll go to questions.
Thank you, Ms. Byers. Highlights?
Highlights. I will highlight that the downtown vision plan, it's a 30-year phased plan that was initiated in 2015 after Bakersfield was selected for the High Speed Rail Station. It really focused on the reinvestment into historic downtown and making Chester Avenue the front door to the new High Speed Rail Station. And so I am going to buzz through these because it is a lot of information. Phase one was a decade worth of work. And so here we go. Hold on. So here's the vision plans. You guys do have copies of this. It really is about that reinvestment, increasing population, supporting activity, developing those vacant properties. So that's the work that we have been doing. There were strategies for three, the three phases included 49 policy strategies and 25 physical strategies. So I'm going to only run through this phase one items. Enhance economic development. Economic Development Department was eliminated back in 2011 after redevelopment went away. There was a one part-time person that worked on economic development until 2019, and then the department was formed in 2021. We now have four people that are dedicated only towards the economic development of our community. The downtown Economic Opportunity Area, the EOA, that was activated. It was continued because it was only a term of 10 years, from 2014 to 2024. City Council updated and renewed it until 2034. We've done 45 EOA activities in the downtown area. Set a goal of reaching 10,000 residents. In 2015, there were only 5,000 residents in the downtown. We're now up to 9,400 and growing. That's 19% since 2015. And then we did a study to see how many other housing we could do. The study showed that we could do an additional 25,000 units. Implementing iconic and catalytic housing and mixed use. The Lourdes Huerta Cultural Center, GET is going to do some transit center and housing. East Chester, CityServe, there's a lot of housing that's being constructed in downtown. Enhance business support. We have an entrepreneurship program that's been very successful. The EOA, we have a Pick Bakersfield, which is an online site selector, and it identifies what activities can happen in different zoning. We have SizeUp, so if you're a small business, how do you compare with other businesses? So those are some of our business support. Policy strategy, transit-oriented design. We are working with High Speed Rail, Caltrans, on three studies that will look at what transit-oriented development looks like. F Street corridor capacity for utilities, and then State Route 204. Developing downtown smart cities. There's all kinds of things that the city has done. Clarity permitting system. We have a new digital radio. The city has an app now. You look back in time and you're like, all these things have happened since 2015. So we have a city app. There's Ask Archie. GET even has real-time bus and transit. Some things that are still in the work. Mill Creek Entertainment District, developing that out completely, launching a P-Bid. We are working with the Downtown Business Association on what that might look like as a funding resource for the development, leveraging our publicly owned parcels, and also looking at parking areas for the downtown. Policy strategies. We are going through a general plan update, if you haven't heard, and that will include zoning ordinance. And so the vision for downtown had a lot of items that could be included in that down, in that general plan update. There will be a downtown element. We're looking at that framework and slated to begin that work in June of this year. So then some of those downtown policies, really about place-making, downtown identity, historic preservation. We have a study that's occurring with our historic preservation for cultural resources. That's to be completed. I think there's a slide. Anyway, so the downtown historic cultural resources will be completed by June of this year. Really looking at implementing Mills Act, making it feasible for historic businesses or historic buildings to update and receive some tax value from that. These are all of the strategies that we're working on. Overlay zones, residential zones. Ordinances have been being worked on for development in our CB and CC zone, incentive zoning, just a lot of work. The architectural overlay zone, we're starting to look at downtown kind of specific plan layout and what that might be. Vision planning, similar to what we're doing currently in Old Town Kern. So those are some of the policies that are occurring right now. Infrastructure. These were items that were identified in the downtown vision. Master sewer study, that was completed in 2020. A storm drain study, that was completed in 2020. Working on rehabilitation, prioritizing capital improvements. We're going to be taking the impact fee study. I don't want to misspeak. I think it's going to Housing and Community Development at the next, eh, soon. Going to one of the, one of the committees soon to look at fee studies. Parking policy. We've done one downtown study by our Dura that showed how much parking is needed in the downtown over the next five, 10 years. Looking at ways to fund that. Do we look at on-street parking fees? Having access to a resource, an ongoing resource to build other facilities that would be more efficient. Oh, here's the slide. Okay. See, I'm going so fast, I don't remember the things that we're doing. This is the historic preservation policy, the Mills Act that we're working on, adaptive reuse, facade easements. That has been huge in our EOAs and making sure that we have provided resources. Woolworth is slated here. I spoke with Emily Waite earlier today. They're looking at a May opening of that building. And so we will all be invited to that. The downtown mobile, what active transportation has looked like. We were talking just earlier about being walkable and having complete streets, and those are things that were identified in the vision plan. And so we did adopt a downtown walkability plan, pedestrian guidelines, wayfinding strategy. All of those just make it a more livable area to incorporate into our downtown. Then the active transportation, enhancing the economy and livability through mobility improvements, smart streets, complete streets. These are all things that we continue to work on, but we've also been successful in a couple of other things. The Complete Streets Resolution was adopted in 2023, and Zach and his team have been working on really evaluating all of the community, not only the downtown. The physical strategies. We did do 23rd and 24th Street intersection improvements. Franklin did receive safer routes to school. 18th and 19th. We're at 65% design for L Street to O Street segment with only partial construction funding awarded. And so Zach's team again is looking for resources to get that area completed. Garcia Circle, it received a retrofit. We do have the Wall Street Pedestrian Paseo and activating that. That was a project we've talked a little bit with Blue Zones about. Wall Street Clock Tower. Actually, this was the first time that I had seen doing something to replicate or reconstruct the clock tower and then having rapid flashing beacons at crosswalks throughout our downtown area. F Street, Golden State pedestrian improvements. You're seeing a lot of pedestrian improvements in the downtown area. But the complete streets includes not only what is physically seen, it also includes a lot of that civil engineering of the infrastructure. The Making Downtown Bakersfield did include what infrastructure was necessary in order to build out. A lot of our infrastructure is older in the downtown compared to the rest of the community, but also didn't envision having, you know, up to 25,000 new residences in the downtown. And so that study did include a utility study, and some of that work has been done on 34th Street already. Physical strategies. There's a lot of open space conversations. If you're going to make it more walkable, then you do have to have more open space. Parklets program, that's one thing we're going to explore. There is a downtown tree plan to increase the tree canopy, Kern River Parkway. That's something that's also occurring in the, in the general plan update. Public art. Walter in the Recreation and Parks Department is working on several art installations to the downtown area. And then transit improvements, working with GET, having a circulator shuttle. GET is doing, even though they're going to be relocating off of the site there on F Street, they're still very much invested in downtown and mobility concepts. Bike improvements. It was funny when I, I was speaking earlier about seeing the very early on videos of this process. And Jason Kater at the time worked for Bike Bakersfield. Bob Smith is very involved with Bike Bakersfield. And so you see a lot of the bike improvements that have been made. Still working on 17th Street, extending 30th Street, and then the Union Avenue bike lane. And so that's a lot of work over the past decade to see some of these improvements.
Thank you, Ms. Byers. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public speaker requests regarding this item?
Mayor, we have not received any speaker cards on this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Byers, for the presentation and for moving quickly through it. In turn, I'll try to move through my comments, but no guarantees. First and foremost, I just wanted to thank my colleagues in the City Council, both the present council and past colleagues, former City Council members, for always supporting downtown revitalization. Since I've been on the council, all of my colleagues have supported downtown and the investments that the city has made. And I think that there's a couple of reasons why. Number one is that we all know that a strong city requires a strong downtown. Downtown is the heart of any major city, any mid-sized city. And certainly, we, I think, all of us recognize the importance of investing in downtown. It's not just Ward 2's downtown. It is Bakersfield's downtown. The other thing that I always keep in mind is that many of downtown's property owners and business owners and employers and employees actually don't live in Ward 2. They're not voters of mine. They're actually residents of Ward 1, Ward 3, Ward 4, 5, 6, and 7. And they come from all four corners of our city. And so it's really important for all of us to take ownership. And I've never been protective of my ward and certainly welcomed lots of input from my colleagues and appreciated all their wonderful ideas over the years. And so I want to thank city staff, want to thank Public Works, City Manager's Office, City Attorney's Office, Code Enforcement, I mean, Building Department, every department really, Recreation and Parks, for all of the work that they've done throughout the years to really implement a lot of these action steps. I have here a page from the action plan. There are 34 priority action items, 34. There are many items that we have not touched yet. And what I'd like us to do is, is in some fashion, either through committee, I guess I would ask you for your best recommendation, Mr. Clegg, but to reprioritize some of these things and perhaps even remove some of these items. For example, the Wall Street Paseo, for me, is not a priority until we fully complete the 18th and 19th Street Complete Streets project. I think that should take priority over this Paseo concept. Many of our alleys still function as service alleys and should, should continue to work in that, in that matter, in that manner. But I think we need to prioritize it. But I also think that, you know, this 10-year plan needs to be extended, extended another, another five years or so. We, we're still in phase one, and I'm not sure we're quite ready yet to move into phase two, particularly when you consider the uncertainty around the High Speed Rail Station. And so I want to make that referral tonight, that staff come back and give us a firm recommendation of what we do with regard to this plan. But my, my request would be that we extended another five years. Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Mayor and Council, I think the five-year extension has good alignment because as we've, you know, been in communication with High Speed Rail, they're really looking at like a 2030 timeframe around some of their construction, but that's going to take, you know, some, quite some time. And so I think there's good alignment, you know, before we're really ready to contemplate, you know, the development that would occur around a station site. That's first. So I would support that recommendation. Second, I think what we could do as staff, I think it's important to get some of that feedback on prioritization. I think that committee is a more productive environment. We are good listeners of council, and so I would recommend that we come to a committee with some recommendations about what to take out and maybe even what to add, one or two, and, and what we would consider prioritization. It's easier to react sometimes to a recommendation and then let a council committee work through that and bring it back to council. I would probably recommend the Finance, Economic Development, and Jobs Committee.
We're on the same page. I was just going to say that. I think that, that's the most appropriate step. Okay, great. Thank you. There's, there's a couple of things that I want to mention in some referrals. Number one is, you know, as we continue to look towards the revitalization and continue to work towards the more proactive steps to revitalize downtown, we also have to recognize the most immediate needs related to safety, the perception of safety and security within downtown. You know, one of the issues that has been raised by property owners is that their insurance carriers are reporting that there is a crime report that comes out that, that really determines, in large part, property insurance rates. And in some instances, downtown and Old Town Kern have been rated 100 out of 100 in, in, related to safety and security. We, we need to really take a harder look at that and see how we can enhance our security. I know there's been a lot done related to private security, related to our impact teams. But I wonder if, you know, for example, if we can, you know, work on creative ways to really enhance patrolling from our police department between the 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM period, where we've seen certain instances happen within, within the downtown. I know Chief is not in this room, but that's just a referral of something that we can, I'm hoping that we can explore and look into in the future. Homelessness is another issue that we know it really impacts the downtown. And I want to make a point to my colleagues, there's really nothing inherent about downtown that creates the homelessness problem. Homelessness is not a downtown problem. It is a citywide problem that disproportionately impacts downtown. And downtown business owners and property owners and residents have had, had to deal with homelessness and the impacts of the unhoused population disproportionately. And, and so I really appreciate the city's investment to, to address some of these issues. But I do think that there are some environmental design issues that we need to address. And so, you know, for me, the question is, what's really attracting people who are unhoused to the downtown? And I think some of the things are really obvious. One is the vacant buildings. That's why I'm really happy that we have the, the registry related to vacant buildings, but I'm hoping that we can continue. There's an outstanding referral to, to enhance that ordinance on the books. I know staff is working on that. We also know that dark alleys are a contributor to, to bringing people into, into the downtown. And we need a strategy to really address those dark alleys, either through enhanced lighting or perhaps locking or, or closing some of these alleys. And then open dumpsters. Open dumpsters have been a chronic nuisance for, for years. And we've had a program to actually provide metal lids and locks on some of these dumpsters. But frankly, it's, it's been moving at a modest pace, but there's still many more dumpsters that are unlocked and that are open. I would like to go ahead and make a referral tonight that we look towards an ordinance that requires all property owners in the downtown to place metal lids on their dumpsters along with locks. I think that will help us as well. And there, there are many other different policy strategies that I'd like us to pursue. I'll, I'll save them for another night. But all in all, I just want to thank again staff for all of the work throughout the years of really focusing in on downtown. A lot of the plans that we've in place are really setting the stage for future development over the long term. And we're starting to see that development accelerate. We're starting to see more and more restaurants come in, more and more investment come in. It's, it's, this is not hyperbole, weekly, that I get calls from potential developers or investors who want to do things in downtown. I was just on the phone two days ago with an NFL player related to his interest in developing in downtown Bakersfield. And so, you know, there's momentum and people are feeling it and the community's feeling it. And we just need to continue to push forward. And there are lots of different things in incremental ways that we can do to really help accelerate that continued revitalization. The EOA program, the facade improvement program, and then some of these quality of life ordinances that will help us clamp down on some of the problems. I think we'll, the combination of all those things will really help us get to that next iteration of revitalization. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all the work. Thanks.
Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Ms. Byers, we approved the High Speed Rail plan many years ago. And, like, eight or 10 years ago. And there was, you know, some of money that the High Speed Rail was supposed to give us for some of its infrastructure improvements along F Street, Golden State Highway and those areas there. And, you know, other cities received money from the High Speed Rail, but we've never seen our money. And so do you have any idea where we're at with that?
City Manager Clegg, and then Assistant Man, Assistant City Manager Anthony?
Yeah, I'll start off and then Anthony Valdez, Assistant City Manager, can follow up as he's been our liaison with High Speed Rail. I think one distinction I would draw first is that we don't have any sort of legal claim to a dollar number that was ever made to the city, just for, for clarity's sake. I think there were allusions to some of what High Speed Rail thought they could accomplish, or some of our desires of what we could try and get them to, to include in their project. Some of the other areas that have received a lot of money... Some of the other areas that have received a lot of monies, like Los Angeles's Union Station, you know, received significant funding allocations, but those were actually from different buckets. They were from some state buckets. And they got the funding because it was tied to multimodal and High Speed Rail, but it wasn't technically High Speed Rail money. And so we actually, you know, we don't have sort of a dollar amount that we can lay claim to in any sort of legal document. There's just been a lot of, I think, conversation and discussion. What I could say, two other points, and I think Anthony will speak to these and maybe, you know, delve in a little more, is that High Speed Rail, I think, particularly as they've progressed down the alignment and with some of the financial challenges for them to complete the project, they're very focused on their own track and their own station improvements. And we know that there's going to be significant investment at the station site itself, but we're hearing, what we're really hearing is there's not going to be a lot of other funds for other extraneous, you know, transportation, you know, aspects even that tie into the station beyond just their footprint. What we have been able to do, and this is a kudos to Mr. Valdez for fighting and scraping for everything we can get for Bakersfield, is they have included recently dollars to do studies, dollars to do, to connect and align with other state programs. And we're trying to leverage as much as we can the work that they're doing to get value out of those planning efforts. I think where we could get more dollars is something like when, I can't remember, I believe it was Merced, but they were able to tie a federal grant that was for infrastructure to High Speed Rail under a prior administration. And so they were able to get a $25 million grant because of its connection to a High Speed Rail station. I think there is opportunities for us to go after funds, but High Speed Rail, I don't see as having big dollars to do things outside of their station footprint.
I don't have much to add, except that they do only have a responsibility to their station footprint, to the track that's leading up, to mitigate any impacts in the areas leading up into the station site. Much of the development that was done in other cities, places like LA's Union Station, was with grant money, which is why we've asked High Speed Rail to commit to the studies that will allow us to pursue those fundings elsewhere.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry I didn't hear my microphone. Can you talk a little bit, this is Ms. Byers again, I'm sorry. Can you talk a little bit about the transit-oriented development and what specifically you're talking about? I see some projects on here, but it's really vague.
It is vague, and it's actually one of the studies that we are working on that Anthony just referred to with Caltrans for the design of the remainder of the station. So I don't remember how many acres the High Speed Rail station is.
Forty.
Okay, I was going to say that. Forty acres. But their footprint is relatively small, and so that what they're doing is they're looking at what the rest of that design is. Get also received a housing grant to put some housing located where the current station is and to design that. And so that it's not only the bus intersection, the downtown where all the buses come together, but there'll be some residences. And so they received a grant for that kind of development. That's very specific transit-oriented development.
One of the challenges that we addressed when we, the Golden State was not the original location that High Speed Rail wanted to put the depot. And, but we, as a community, we saw issues with what they wanted to do and bring it in over here near the Amtrak station. And so we went back to them, and they agreed in time that, yeah, the Golden State was probably a better way. But our problem always was, you know, everything needs to be contiguous. In other words, you bring people here, and there was nothing down there, right? And so all of our event space and our hotels are all up here at Truckston, Chester, that area. And so, you know, the question was, how are those people going to get from the High Speed Rail to these facilities? Is that the kind of thing that you're talking about?
Yeah, so Gus, GetBuses evaluating downtown circulator, that's one of the ways. But the analysis in this document, I mean, it's over 350 pages long between everything. And it includes like how many for the development of downtown to build out, how many more hotel rooms we need, how much more office space we need, kind of these residential studies. And that is part of this entire vision plan being a 30-year program. And so the first 10 years that we've been going through is really implementing some of the easier items. And then as we move through this, developing and incentivizing more hotels, more activities, the circulator that's going to be going through the community, making it walkable, making it bike-friendly, providing alternative ways for transportation. But you're right, this study, when it was started in 2015, evaluated both sites. Between 2015 and 2018, they landed on the F Street site. And so there's a lot of development procedures or policies in between both those areas. So it was really developed, if either site was selected, what that looks for, for hotels, for residences, for activities.
Thank you. P-bid.
Well, let's talk about it.
Let's talk about P-bid. P-bid hasn't been very popular in the past. We've had a lot of trouble getting those passed. Do we have any expectation that we're going to be able to get that done this time around?
I think the focus and we've been having...
And what's changed?
Oh, your question was...
My question was what's changed?
Oh, what's changed?
Yeah. The business owners, not the business owners, the property owners, which are not always the business owners, were reluctant to approve a P-bid. So what's changed?
So we're looking more specifically, not a swath. When you talk about downtown, what do you really think downtown is? It looks different in all of these neighborhoods. And so we've been working with Downtown Business Association and maybe identifying smaller areas. East Chester right now has a lot of housing that's going in. There's a lot of redevelopment going in. So 18th, 19th, East Chester is maybe doing a P-bid that only impacts them, that they can make decisions for themselves. Because if you talk to somebody that's over on 18th or 19th, or if you talk with someone that's over on F Street, they have different needs, even if they're just a mile apart. And so really working on a P-bid that is specific to some of these areas, if you were to really break down downtown Bakersfield, how would it impact or how could it benefit some of these smaller areas instead of just trying to get everyone from California, Union, F Street, over to San Dimas or over to 34th Street? You look at that as what's really considered our classic downtown. So when we're talking about P-bids now, we're talking more on a neighborhood scale based off of what the synergy they want to see.
So I understand what you're saying, but I struggle with that because it's kind of like insurance, you know? Insurance only really works if you have a lot of people paying into it, right? You know, insurance is based on the probability of a loss and how much would that loss cost, and how many homeowners am I putting in this pool, and then we can do the math. But if you have, you know, a small area in a P-bid, and then the other areas around it are not contributing to that, you know, how do you distribute, A, how do you make it equitable for the whole community? So...
I think one of the hard conversations going to be, and Cecilia showed me this one that's in Sacramento, the Handler District. It is two square, two blocks in either direction. So it's really just a very small area, the Handler District, that had specific things that they wanted to do. They wanted to have the lights that cross the streets. They wanted to have the trash cleaned up. They wanted their district to have paid parking, and then they were able to utilize those resources to have more funding. And then if we were to do something on a smaller scale and they were investing in themselves and the city partnered with them, whether it be tax increment financing, whether it be an enhanced infrastructure financing district, if we did it on a small scale and they really started to see it grow, then other areas would be interested. Well, why are they getting that? Well, they created a P-bid. They created something that they decided for themselves how to spend the money and how to spend the resources.
And if I could kind of take us back out to the 30,000-foot level on the topic of P-bids, I just think the last two times that it went forward, I think they had a different, maybe, originals or focus or intent. And I think we didn't necessarily do the homework to go and ask folks, what do you really want and what's really going to show that value? And so we need to go and do that homework. I think this is another topic that probably is a good one at the committee level to kind of dig down in and, you know, work on some of those areas. But I think if we're smart about really understanding what downtown businesses would be willing to pay for, I don't think that question was answered prior. And I think we can answer that question and pursue it a little bit differently.
Thank you.
May I also, because I was part of those two efforts, I think from my perspective, Mr. Clegg is correct, but also I think overall, there were concerns related to how the management of the P-bid would function, what that would actually look like. And so there were a lot of technical questions. I think to answer your question, though, Councilmember Coleman, of what has changed, a lot of the property ownership has changed within the core of downtown. And from my relationships with lots of different property owners, I sense that the sentiment is shifting, where folks are more supportive. And I would actually recommend that the city focus in on the 18th, 19th Street corridor as we are demonstrating our commitment and making a significant multimillion-dollar investment to improve the look and feel and walkability of 18th and 19th Street that we also, in concert, worked with those property owners to develop a property-based improvement district. But this has to be led by the property owners and not by any other group. The other thing that I want to mention is that many of the P-bids throughout the state fund basic things that currently the city of Bakersfield is funding. The downtown ambassadors, the street cleaning services, the, you know, human waste cleanup, the additional enhanced private security, all those things typically are functions of a property-based improvement district. But in this city and in downtown, because of our experience with the P-bid, the city has actually stepped up and made significant investments. So what the other thing I think we need to do is report back to all the property owners of how much city investment has gone into downtown over the last seven years. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to reinforce that, that a P-bid is real important to, when you talk about other city resources that were contributing to the downtowns, it's a lot easier sell to the people that don't own property downtown, don't have businesses downtown, if, you know, those businesses have an extra little stake in the game. I don't know what that number needs to be. I just need, I think it's more psychological than anything else, but it's really, really going to be important, I think, going forward that we have some kind of maintenance district, but I don't know what you call it exactly. But thank you for your work on that. I appreciate that. I'm going to cut my comments short. I can go on and on, because I have several questions. But considering the hour, I do appreciate everything your department's doing. It was a big lapse between the old redevelopment agency and when your agency began. There was a big gap of time when there wasn't any organized, the city was still doing things, but it wasn't an organized effort. So I do appreciate what you guys are doing. I do have a little concern about the number of people that we're adding to the department. And I just want to ask the city manager to keep an eye on that, because we've grown exponentially over the, since Measure N passed. And I'm a little concerned, because once you add people, you own them forever and ever and ever. And...
We're done adding people.
I'm sorry?
We're done adding people.
Okay, that's good, thank you. All right.
I'll answer that for Christian.
All right. So I will end my comments right now in the interest of time. And if I have any more questions, I'll get with you offline. So thank you very much for your work. I have no further questions, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
I just had a quick question for Public Works. The utility conversion that was done on 34th Street, it says that it was in the presentation it was initiated by PG&E but completed or is going to be completed by Public Works? Is there a reason that PG&E didn't follow through with that or it fell onto Public Works lap? Did we foot that bill today?
Mayor, Councilmember Bashir Tash, I don't have the answer to that specific question. I do know it is a Public Works project to do the 34th Street improvements. It's in 15% design, and that's where we are right now, is trying to figure out the underground utility issues to make the project work.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we can confirm specifically, but there's a, what's called Rule 20A process where PG&E has to set aside certain dollars that actually go to locals, and then we get to decide what those projects are spent on. And I believe this project is one of those where, and it is specifically for undergrounding. And those, unfortunately, those funds don't add up super fast, but as they kind of add up and we have enough to go and do a project with, we'll go and use those PG&E resources to do a big undergrounding project. And we'll confirm, though, that that's what it was. It wasn't a PG&E obligation. It was just PG&E funds that we decided which projects to complete with.
Councilmember, anything further? Next, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, a couple of things. The, I haven't heard an update, and you mentioned the PQ property. Is anything happening there or what's...
Currently, we had had, but you'll recall, we had a letter of intent with one developer back in '21, '22 that expired. We had another letter of intent with another developer that has not also, you know, come forward with a tangible project. We've actually gone back to them and said, you know, do you want to try and rework that? You know, come back to us with something. But we haven't, we haven't had a proposal back yet.
Okay. And the other thing is, you mentioned a number of, we had 5,000 residents, and now we have 94, 54. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like we've doubled our residential people downtown.
I'll go back and look at the original area, because I don't think it included Westchester. And so we'll go back and we'll look at that, because, yeah, it went from 5 to 9,000, and I think I said 15,000.
Yeah, it's easy to get to 10,000 if you just keep growing. I get it. Thank you.
You don't think you added that many?
I'm working on it, but, you know, a few hundred.
Anything further, Councilmember Smith?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Aris.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jenny, for the, for the presentation and for keeping it succinct. I just wanted to really quickly touch on the importance of, you know, continuing to support our businesses in downtown. Couldn't agree more with my colleague that we need to continue to do this work. I think, you know, under your leadership, there's been some market improvements with the EOA program, with the program that provided financial assistance to those who are looking to make security improvements to their businesses and, you know, private security investments. And the list goes on and on, and I just want to say kudos to my colleague here on the dais for really leading that effort. And I think we have to continue to do more. But I'll just add that I agree, this is a really, really exciting time for the city of Bakersfield, but specifically downtown Bakersfield. And I will accept my colleague's invitation to also do what I can to help support downtown. There's a really unique opportunity as it relates to... There's a really unique opportunity as it relates to high-speed rail coming in, but also amazing new developments like the Los Rortes Peace and Justice Center, where if we are able to develop a plan and a strategy to help facilitate that transit for potential folks coming, you know, from all parts of Kern County, the Central Valley, across the country really, to come and see the amazing work and legacy of her. If we are considering also, you know, making an acquisition of the Crystal Palace to preserve the cultural, the culture and tradition there, I think that we should be spending some additional time thinking about how we can connect all of those pieces. And it has been years since we first started talking about a downtown circulator bus. And I think it's time that we really take a step in making that a reality. And I think it's upon us to really look at ourselves and figure out what can the city of Bakersfield do to initiate the first phase of what that could look like. There's a ton of energy, particularly with some of the downtown businesses along 18th, 19th, and into Old Town Kern. And I would like to make a referral tonight that we bring some ideas on how the city of Bakersfield can take the next step in building that out in partnership with GetBus. But let's take some action. I think this is low-hanging fruit. It's going to increase public safety throughout those corridors and, of course, support our businesses in downtown.
Mr. Anthony is speaking at the State of the Downtown next week. We'll be sure to add that talking point to his program.
Councilmember Gonzalez, do you still need to speak? You already jumped ahead.
Yes. Just thank you, Councilmember Arias. I've been petitioning GetBus for years on the circulator, I like to call it a trolley, downtown to Old Town. I think can really enhance the foot traffic and the number of visitors in both of those neighborhoods. And so would love to partner with you on that. Finally, I just want to give another shout-out to Solid Waste Division. Their implementation of the new trash receptacles have been well-received. Businesses love it, visitors to downtown love it, I love them. And I just want to commend them. And I hope that we can do a lot more of them throughout the downtown core. So with that, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
You have a motion, please cast your votes. Thank you, Ms. Byers.
And I would like to thank Cecilia Grego. She's here tonight. She worked on the plan. She works on the EOAs. She works on the trash. She works on all of those items.
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Corr and Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor statements.
Madam City Clerk, is there anyone? I don't see anyone on my, thank you. So Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one other item on downtown and on Bakersfield in general. You know, I'm a community booster, that's why I'm here. And I just, Bakersfield is a beautiful city overall and downtown is a great downtown and most cities can't say that. And so very proud of what we've done and it's really changed. You know, go back to when Alan Tandy started and we had Steel Beans and a bankrupt, what was to be the Marriott, and built the arena, built Mill Creek, Q Street, and now the private development is following with housing and retail and what the city does on cleanup and safety and it is a great thing. And I really appreciate all the people that's worked on it over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, just a question for staff. As we head into the mid-year budget, I just wanted to get a timeline on when we can expect that to come back to the full council.
Thank you, Councilmember. We are looking to have a preliminary look at the numbers at our next council meeting to then have a final mid-year determination at one of our March meetings. I'll take the opportunity to just give a quick summary that, as I've shared with you, we are looking at some revenue reduction measures to align with some of our recent, you know, sales tax reports. And so I would expect a very succinct mid-year process because I'm going to be recommending that we do as much as we can to take funds and set them aside for the next budget process as well as make those corrections we need to make. And so I don't expect to be making many adds as we're making some of those other corrections. We do have some contingent projects that, or even go all the way back to last year, that we have kind of pivoted and said, what can we do with those, you know, project dollars and which contingent projects move forward? But beyond that, I'm going to be recommending a very conservative mid-year.
Thank you for that update. And I know that there won't be very many opportunities at all for us to make significant one-time investments in capital projects, but particularly as we have two new colleagues on the dais, I just want to reiterate the importance, to me, that when we enter these budget conversations, that staff obviously provides recommendation, but really provides some additional insight into all of the many different capital projects that are on the table. I think it's very important for us as representatives of our districts and our constituents to know what the trade-offs are and why we're choosing certain projects over others, whether that be because of grant investments, strategic investments, or it's just the right project at the right time. So I would appreciate that. The second is, I want to invite everyone in this room and beyond in the public, tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., we are going to be at Del Orell High School celebrating the groundbreaking of a new one-and-a-half-mile sewer trunk line that's going to be installed along MLK. This is something that has been long in the works and we're super excited about all the housing that's going to come thereafter and also some commercial and park developments there in the future. So please join us. I'm also going to announce that Mr. Gary Howland is officially the head coach for the MLK corridor and the Southeast Bakersfield Economic Development Program. So Gary, thank you to you, Megan, and the entire team for all of the pivoting that you've been able to do, literally weathering the storm and making the show happen. So super excited about tomorrow and looking forward to seeing everybody who can make it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Tonight, at tonight's meeting, we received a blue memo that staff had pulled an item related to a public art sculpture investment and that they would pull the item for further staff analysis. And I appreciate that. And I want to thank staff for working with me on this item throughout this week. I would like to ask that, in analyzing this project, that we look for new funding sources for our public art program beyond or outside of the Public Safety and Model Services Initiative and that we also reconsider what type of public art projects. I'm in support of public art. I think that in a city our size and as we continue to grow, that public art has a lot of benefits, but that we look for perhaps locally-based projects, maybe smaller projects that we can place within and throughout the city. I'd like to also ask that we look at reallocating that $600,000 that we had committed, or that we had allocated, rather, that we reallocate those dollars to some of the more pressing challenges that we're facing related to public safety by enhancing street lighting in some of our neighborhoods that have inadequate lighting. And if that's a consideration that we can explore, I'd appreciate it. The last thing is, I had a wonderful breakfast this morning with former city council member Freeman, and he's doing well and he misses you all. And he had lots of great insights for me. And I wondered, you know, if staff can provide via a memo, some analysis on how, what is the protocol for awarding a key of the city? And if we can establish a resolution that would recognize both council members Freeman and Gray by recognizing, by gifting them a key to the city? I think that, you know, their contributions as a volunteer city council member with all of the effort that they made over the years, the leadership that they provided, and as a volunteer, really is worthy of that high of an honor. And so I'd like to ask the city council to consider that and have staff provide some analysis on how to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't going to speak anymore, but I will now. So I will mention that, you know, Ward 5 is actually having a grand opening of the new Heart Clinic, Centric Health, and on the property of the Southwest Mercy Hospital. Its grand opening is tomorrow afternoon at 4:00. It's a significant investment, private investment in our community and it anchors that area of Ward 5 into the future in providing state-of-the-art medical and other services that are drastically needed in our community. I wanted to address that issue of the sculpture that we just talked about being pulled off. I think the concern was, in the age of Doge, we need to be careful about what we spend money on and what we call it. And so I think that a large portion of the opposition was related to outside artists and that we really need to consider local artists and local businesses when we're talking about these kind of things. And we need to be sure they're given an opportunity to do those. So that would be something that I would be interested in if this comes back again. I would hope it wouldn't, but I understand the whole art thing. I get it. But I think it was, you know, the wrong time and the wrong approach to it. So I'm interested in seeing what else we can spend that money on. I'm not sure because it come out of some PSVS funds that I really wasn't sure about. And so I'm sure that limits us to what we can do with it. So I have no further questions or comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman. I don't see any other requests. I had the privilege of going to Sacramento this week with big-city mayors and we met with the governor, the Senate Pro Tem Committee Chairs, and the Police Officers Association advocating for funding and regulatory reform to address homelessness, public safety, housing, and then youth jobs. We called on the governor and the legislators to advocate the needed resources and to remove barriers through policy reform. And then Assistant City Manager Valdez and I stayed over and we had the privilege of meeting with the Secretary of the California Departments of Corrections and Rehabilitation and then also Health and Human Services, advocating for issues important to Bakersfield specifically. So thank you, Mr. Valdez, for that. And with that, we stand adjourned at 7:57.